If that's alright, Chairman Jackson is out for a little while, so as Vice Chair, I'm gonna step in and take control. I've got the distinct honor of having my friend Jack Romberg, Rabbi Romberg, come in to give the invocation today. I'd like to just say a few words before he steps up. But Jack moved here 18 years ago and has been a great friend of mine for the last 14 probably of those 18. When we had the healthcare sales tax, we were on opposite sides of the equation and became fast friends. He has done a ton for this community in the way of Village Square, Faith Food Friday. Jack has really been involved in a lot of the issues in our community and he will be missed greatly. So let me just, if you guys don't mind, help me recognize Rabbi Romberg before he comes up and give the invocation.
Thank you. Brian, I can't thank you enough. And yes, it was really funny how we became friends because we were speaking on opposite sides of an issue and we just looked at each other and said, you know, actually you're making sense. We tried to bring things together behind the scenes.
I was right. I'd like to...
And interestingly enough, I ended up supporting you for Commissioner then.
Thank you.
So, and I have to say that I think there's not one Commissioner that I don't know to some degree, and so I feel very honored to be here with all of you. I think, as usual, I do a little teaching first before we do the prayer. And I think most of you know that we are in the middle of a very important Jewish holiday, the holiday of Passover. And Passover, our Seder, that is the dinner and praying that we do, the service that we do at our homes the first two nights, is based on the number four. It's based, there's four sections, there's something called the four questions, we talk about four children. And the reason why it's based on four is because of four promises that God made in the Book of Exodus to Moses before he goes and he confronts Pharaoh. The promises are, "I will get you out." In other words, God will show a way out of the slavery. And then, "I will save you." That is, God will save them from the plagues that hit the Egyptians. And then, "I will redeem you." The redemption is saving them at the Sea of Reeds, where they were trapped between the Sea of Reeds and the Egyptian army. And then, the fourth one is, "I will take you," and it is "take you to be my people." And that is, God reached out to Moses and the people of Israel and said, "You are now my people." And I think that all of these, while we use them specifically for Passover, actually are applicable to everybody in this room and everybody in our community. God does show a way. God does, at some point, save us from certain things. God redeems us from some difficult circumstances, and God takes us to be God's own people. And then, there is a fifth promise that is not fulfilled. It's, "I will bring you." And the promise is that God will bring us, actually, to the Promised Land. And indeed, that is represented by a special cup for Elijah the Prophet, who is supposed to come before the Messiah comes. And in our Seder, we end every, everyone, every year, it ends with the words, "Next year in Jerusalem," hoping that there will actually be peace and beauty in Jerusalem. Again, applicable to all of us, because in the end, what happens in Jerusalem is not really up to God. It's up to us and the people living there to make it happen in a correct way. And so, while God provides four things for all of us in this community, for all of us anywhere in the world, there is always a point at which God expects us to do the rest. God expects us to fulfill our obligations. Therefore, we pray that we thank you, God, for all of the things that you supply to us. We thank you for the way that you redeem us, the way you save us, the fact that we become your people, and it does not matter what religion we are, we are your people. And dear God, we recognize our responsibility, that there comes a point that we have to take the load of work and make sure that things come to a Promised Land. And so, we pray that our own Leon County continues on a wonderful path, that it becomes its own Promised Land, a Promised Land for those in need, a Promised Land for those who have, a Promised Land for those who want a good place to live, a Promised Land for those of us who already recognize this is a beautiful place to live. May all of us say, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'm gonna get to do all sorts of things tonight. Be Chairman, read the resolutions. So we have a proclamation recognizing April as a Guardian Ad Litem and National Child Abuse and Prevention Month. Chairman Jackson was to read this, and I'd like to see who's here. Deborah, you're coming up, right? Yeah, that's what I thought. So I will read the proclamation, then I'll ask you to say a few words, if that's okay. Whereas in Leon County, Guardian Ad Litem program represents 631 children, and whereas Leon County wishes to underscore its strong commitment to preventing child abuse and neglect, and whereas Leon County believes all children should have the opportunity to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment, and whereas Leon County recognizes that keeping children safe is a responsibility that extends beyond parents and family members to include local governments, businesses, and citizens. Whereas Leon County wishes to recognize the 350 men and women who volunteer with the Second Judicial Court Guardian Ad Litem program to ensure our children are safe, protected, and provided the services necessary to promote personal well-being. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Leon County, Florida, that April 2019 be known as Guardian Ad Litem and National Child Abuse and Prevention Month. And in Leon County, and the Board further calls upon all residents to join their fellow citizens across the Second Judicial Circuit in recognizing and participating in this special observance dated today, signed by all of the Commissioners and the Administrator Vince Long. And with that, I will hand you this and ask that you make a few words.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Scribble. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here today. And for Child Abuse and Prevention Month, you know, it's not a situation where we can kind of celebrate, because much of what we deal with is very difficult for everyone. But what this does is promote the program, provide awareness, promote awareness of our program, and the need for all of us to always keep in mind what the children are going through. So I did want to just highlight a few things. The number of children that we're serving has actually gone up even in the past week or past couple of weeks since we sent in the numbers. And that's what we have been dealing with this past year, is our numbers are increasing. So this is even more important that we're doing this this year and for this month. So we're serving 635 children in six counties right now, and the majority of those children are here in Leon County. Seventy percent are here in this area that we're serving. And we're serving that with the benefit, we're serving those children with the benefit of 365 volunteer child advocates in the six counties. So we're very proud of that, because we've been able to maintain every child that comes in, that the judges appoint to us, they have their own volunteer child advocate very quickly, and they receive that support. Most of the children are newborns to five years of age. So that is a very critical time in their life. All of our children are going through a lot, but the children that are newborns to five, they're especially vulnerable. So that's the majority of the children that we serve. So what we do is especially critical. This proclamation is helpful in that it's vital that we keep the reality that every day, children are hurting and they're being hurt, that we keep that in the forefront of all of our minds. That's something that I focus on every single day. How can I make sure that our community knows about us and the children that are suffering here in our community? That's what motivates us, that's what motivates our staff, that's what motivates our Guardian Ad Litem advocates every day, because we know what they've been through when they come into our program. And many of them are being placed with relatives who are really struggling financially. The challenge these children experience because of the profound impact of the abuse and the neglect, the violence in the homes is extreme. The neglect is extreme. So once they come into our program, we get very busy in identifying what those needs are and making sure that the caregivers have what they need and that the children have what they need. So it's very, it's a very busy time throughout the time that we're appointed. So the challenge to all of us, and each of you has a pin there, our Guardian Ad Litem pin, so I hope that you'll join us in wearing that pin for this month and maybe longer to share with others about the good work that we do. I have our recruiter here, Taylor Tatchell, she's our volunteer recruiter, and I keep her very busy to bring in as many elite individuals to our program as possible. So again, thank you very much for acknowledging the work that we do and this time. Thank you.
And frankly, the volunteer work like that and some of the work being done in our community, that's what makes, that's the difference between a good community and a great community, people that, you know, live it every day like y'all do. Thank you. Alright, now, Alex, bikes. You got Alex? Come on up. Hey. Something a little bit more in my swim lane. So it is Bike Month, okay? So I am going to read the proclamation about Bike Month. A few words in advance, thank you guys for coming out. We have, I'll brag for a minute, I think we have one of the best bike trail systems in the country. And I bike a fair amount, I travel a fair amount. I'm hoping we can figure out exactly how many miles we have, but we have an unbelievable system here in town, and I think it's one of those unsung treasures that a lot of people don't realize. The mountain bikers in our community who run this gorilla ride that's 100-plus miles in the area all know the background for a lot of this, and I'm hoping I can get that type of thing a little bit more publicized and a little bit more memorialized, because I think there are trails out there. And frankly, I'd like to be able to see us have trails that go from Bannerman on the north side all the way down on the coast on the south side, which I think is doable. So I'm just laying the gauntlet down now as we speak. So anyway, I'll read the proclamation and then I'll ask you guys to say a few words, if that's okay. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans, and whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling as an environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and as quality family recreation. And whereas the education of residents on the proper and safe operation of bicycles and motor vehicles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users, and whereas various cycling organizations and independent cyclists throughout our community are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities. And whereas Leon County supports bicycling through a variety of initiatives, including the development of greenways and trails, and providing bicycle education at the Leon County Sustainable Community Summit. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County that we do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 to be known as Bike Month in Leon County, and the Board further encourages all residents to recognize the importance of bicycle safety and be more aware cyclists on our streets and roadways and get out and bike. And it's signed by all seven Commissioners and Administrator. So thank you for coming out. Thank you. Commissioners, thank you all for your continued support of cycling in Leon County. These efforts were recently acknowledged at the national level by the designation by the League of American Cyclists of Tallahassee as a silver-level bicycle-friendly community. Let's build on that success and take that to the next level. The best way to move forward on that path would be found within the Capital Regional Transportation Planning Agency's 2019 Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. That's a bit of a mouthful there. But found within that plan, so staff has listed the input of the community and through a variety of different ways in crafting that plan to make it the most comprehensive and thorough version to date. And I urge the Commission to approve that plan and to support it and fund it in future years. In doing so, then, you will continue to make Leon County one of the most and best communities in the United States to be a cyclist. So thank you all. Yes.
I'll just recognize you for next one.
We have Commissioner Proctor is up. Volunteer Coordinator, you got your, you ready? Okay. Let me brag on bikes for a minute more while I got the mic here.
Go for it.
Come on down, Commissioner. Mixookie Greenway, the blueprint plans are to add 10 more miles to that. We have seven miles now, Linear Park, we're gonna add to that. City to the Sea Bike Trail, we got 112-mile bike trail in the works south of town, running from the Capitol down to the Gulf, although we need to rename it City to the Gulf instead of City to the Sea. So anyway, with that, Commissioner, I'll call you up and let you take over here. Thanks. And I see our Chairman has arrived, so you're in better hands.
I don't know about better hands, but thank you for the compliment nonetheless. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I want to ask Ms. Kelly Walker, just walk, come on up. She'll let you stand here.
Yes.
Is it okay for once?
Thirty years.
Okay, yes, sir. I thought I'd been standing by your side for a while. I want to ask if School Board Member Darrell Jones would please come up, a school board member representing Leon County Schools. Mr. Jones. Ms. Walker, so much good news about you has emanated, has come to this Board's attention. And we were overwhelmed to see the total inventory of services that you provided over the years, seeing how rich your contributions have been. The School thought it not robbery that we should share this proclamation. It reads, "And whereas Kelly Walker currently serves as Leon County Schools District Volunteer Coordinator and has administrative oversight of the volunteer mentor and business partner programs, where she is responsible for over 16,000 volunteers who annually donate approximately $4 million in volunteer labor. Whereas Kelly Walker, prior to becoming District Volunteer Coordinator for Leon County Schools, worked for the Department of Education in the role of Director of Volunteer and Community Involvement, where she managed programs that promoted exemplary best practice in volunteer and community engagement in Florida's public schools. Whereas Kelly Walker, as a volunteer at Gilchrist Elementary School, built and administered a volunteer program consisting of over 750 parents, grandparents, and community members, which resulted in more than 1.5 million volunteer labor hours. Whereas Ms. Walker, continuing in her volunteering community involvement, established the Partners in Excellence Program at Monford Middle School..." My kids went to Monford.
I know.
...you know, hey, did it. "Mrs. Walker built a business partner program at Monford Middle School, consisting of over 100 different businesses and civic organizations that regularly invested their resources and volunteer manpower into Monford Middle School, which resulted in donations collectively in the approximate of $750,000 in monetary contributions, goods and services, and volunteer labor. Now, School Board Member Darrell Jones would want to recruit you to his next campaign, you know, that kind of, you know, he is those thing. And whereas Ms. Kelly Walker, always seeking to bring about school improvement and community involvement, she has served on various councils, boards, organizations, and foundations to include Leon County Schools District Advisory Council, Central Council of Leon County Schools, Leon High School Soccer Program, Children's Everett Scholarship Foundation, and many more. In 2007, Kelly Walker was named as the Tallahassee Democrat's Volunteer of the Year in the education category. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, find it fitting and appropriate to recognize Kelly Walker for her outstanding service and tireless effort in making community resources available to the children who attend Leon County Schools. Dated this 23rd day of April 2019, it is attested to by the County Administrator and signed by the seven County Commissioners of Leon County. Ms. Walker, we congratulate you for your outstanding service. God bless you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Proctor. Good afternoon, Chair Jackson and County Commissioners. I will have to say, today is a total role reversal for me. As District Volunteer Coordinator for Leon County Schools, a huge component of my job is recognizing the outstanding work of volunteers, mentors, and business partners. But I am very humbled and honored today to receive this proclamation. As I was looking around the room today, I think we all have a similar mission. We all have a similar goal. We want to build a strong, caring, and compassionate community, but I really wholeheartedly believe that has to start with two key ingredients: volunteerism and service to others. As a school system, we can't do it alone. We have to rely on the input of many stakeholders. And this proclamation today, it would not have been possible had it not been for the faithful and the diligent effort of so many volunteers, mentors, and business partners, giving of their time and their talent in investing in our most precious resource. And that resource, that's our children. And really, that investment by those volunteers, that's what's gonna help propel this community forward in the future. So thank you so much, and I thank you for your service to this community, too. Thank you.
Commissioner Maddox, you'd like to share a word?
I couldn't let this opportunity pass by without letting the crowd know I get to work right alongside Ms. Walker and a lot of the things that she does. She is absolutely amazing for this county and our district when it comes to volunteerism. We really appreciate what you do. But that proclamation doesn't come close to talking about how important she is, not only to our school district, but to this county. And so I didn't want to let this opportunity pass by without me saying, "Thank you" from not only this County Commission, but from the kids that you serve within Leon County Schools and the administrators that get the benefit of your hard work in making sure that we have volunteers ready and able to assist in everything that they do. I also wanted you, if you could take the opportunity real quick, to talk about the statewide, I think it was winner that we had, the young lady that you brought forth at our last, at the volunteer luncheon?
Yes. So every year, school districts are able to nominate outstanding school volunteers. And Leon County Schools, just a few weeks ago, we received very exciting news. We had a statewide winner in the adult category. Many of you may recognize the name. Her name is Ms. Marie Claire Lehman. She has been a faithful volunteer at Hartsfield Elementary School for the past 12 years. I read her bio at a volunteer appreciation breakfast a few weeks ago, and just tell her accomplishments by Ms. Lehman to this community.
Thank you. Things like that doesn't happen without the leadership of Ms. Walker. I just want to make sure that she illuminated that and that she got full credit for what she does for our school district. Also, Mr. Chair, giving notice to what she just told us about the statewide winner, I don't know if this would be the moment to do it, but wanted to ask for a proclamation for the young lady who's our statewide winner. And if, Ms. Walker, if you come back, I would love for you to be able to present that proclamation to her, because I know you guys work side by side in getting that done.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, will you allow me to make that motion?
Okay. A motion's been made to recognize our statewide winner. Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, passes unanimously. And Ms. Walker, you won't get off the hook that easy. Ms. Walker serves as a breakfast server and a volunteer coordinator and a inviter of all of the mentors and volunteers that we have in Fort Brayden School, and she's normally there early in the morning with lots of treats for our folks and is unbelievable resource to the kids in Leon County Schools all over our district. And I'm so glad that Mr. Commissioner Proctor nominated you for this proclamation. I just hate that he beat me to the punch. But congratulations to you, and we appreciate you so much. Commissioner Proctor, I think we're gonna put you right back on the spot. Do we have a representative from our...
Not seeing anyone from that entity, I ask if we could roll it to another occasion.
Okay, we will, we will have Commissioner Lenley come forward, and she has a special proclamation to share as well. If they do show up, Commissioner Proctor, just give me the signal.
It's my greatest pleasure to welcome Dr. Alex Brickler Jr. On the occasion of, finally, you're retiring from this baby business you've been in for many, 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 many years. And Dr. Brickler and I got to know each other a long time ago, when he would, you may not know this, and it's not in the proclamation, when he was a columnist for the Tallahassee Democrat, an amazing writer, very provocative, very gentle.
She was my editor.
I was his editor. Yeah, and a good editor indeed, right? But I'm so glad you're here. We really are delighted. And I know probably many, many people in the room have a personal story or friendship with Dr. Brickler or your family, your wonderful family. So here's the proclamation, probably one of many you're gonna be receiving in the next few months as you, as you go into retirement. Whereas Dr. Alexander A.D. Brickler II is retiring from his legendary and pioneering 60-year medical career, having presided over the birth of more than 30,000 newborn babies. And whereas countless physicians and medical staff have been taught by Dr. Brickler through Tallahassee Memorial Family Medicine Residency Program, and later the Anderson-Brickler Midwifery and Obstetrical Services. And whereas Dr. Brickler's fine character, his kindness, understanding of human weaknesses, and his professionalism helped redefine race relations in this area, in this region, beginning in the early 1970s. And whereas his quiet leadership and wisdom led to the integration of medical care between FAMU Hospital and Tallahassee Memorial Hospital, which later named its Women's Pavilion in his honor. And whereas Dr. Brickler's education at Howard University and Mahari College of Medicine is recognition by the American Academy of Family Physicians... is recognition by the American Academy of Family Physicians, his humanitarian award, his lifetime achievement award, and that awesome time he ran the Olympic torch through Tallahassee are cherished and notable memory, moments in the life, in a life well-lived. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we pay tribute to the extraordinary lifetime service of Dr. Alexander Duma Brickler II, dated this 23rd day of April, 2019, and signed by all of your commissioners and our county administrator. Congratulations.
I can only say that when, uh, things like this happen to you, you can look back and realize that, uh, you have a whole lot of people to thank, a whole lot of people who should join me here. The countless colleagues that I've had, the nurses, physicians that I've worked with, and had the honor of seeing them do as much or more sometimes than I. And, uh, above all, the patients who were kind enough to let me, uh, take care of them through the years, I have to thank them. My family, uh, was planning to be here with me, but up in Savannah, my first great-great-grandson came and interrupted the plan. You can see who got the attention there up there and down here. So thank you very, very, very much. I, I'm honored. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Don't rush off, Dr. Brickler. We have several commissioners who'd like to, um, say a few things. Uh, we'll start with, uh, Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Proctor, and Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Dr. Brickler. Hello, sir, how are you? Uh, my, my daughter, my youngest daughter was born, uh, last November at TMH, and, uh, your, your, your portrait, uh, in the Women's Pavilion is prominently displayed. And while, while my daughter was not delivered by you, sir, uh, the legacy there is, is definitely felt. So I wanted to, uh, thank you for everything that you've done for Tallahassee. Let me ask you, I, are you the least bit tired? Thirty thousand, thirty thousand babies?
I'm not going to be running anymore.
I've been through two, and I'm exhausted, and I didn't even do the work. Uh, on, on any account, I didn't do any of the work. So, um, I can only imagine. Thank you so much for, uh, your contribution to this community. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you. Um, a couple seasons ago, um, Mr. Stephen Beasley, uh, said of Dr. Brickler's work, uh, in delivering 30,000, um, children, our community, that, um, Dr. Brickler's, uh, work vocabulary was, um, you know, considering all the pages that we read and words you use, his words went something like, "Easy, it's going to be all right. Breathe, it's okay, everything's all right." You know, like, not a whole sentence, you know? And he says this all, more than 30 times. He said, "Calm, it's going to be okay. Push."
Push.
So, at the conclusion, Dr. Brickler, you know, heard all these accolades and came up to the microphone, Vince, you could appreciate this. He said, "Well, I'm a person of very few words, but I'll just say to you, keep on pushing." Commissioner Dozier, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Brickler, you've got 30,000 families plus who have individual memories. And I'm going to get a little choked up because my very first memory in my entire life at 21 months old was waiting for my sister to be born, and she was in your safe hands at TMH. You have brought a lot of families joy, and I know a lot of them have probably had hard times, too. Thank you for your service to our community.
Even. Now, the camera will...
Now, Commissioner Proctor?
Yes, sir?
Don't be putting this on your campaign literature. Talking about you got an endorsement.
I know.
Them 30,000 votes.
Thirty thousand votes, right there. Dr. Brickler said he's a good man. Thank you, Dr. Brickler. We love you, man. All right, all right. I want to know, I want you to know also, you delivered my kids, so I didn't, I forgot to mention that, but I wanted to, you know, keep the good kids, you know, and not my kids.
Commissioner Maddox?
Dr. Brickler, thank you so much for your service to this community. I mean, 30,000 babies is, is amazing, and Commissioner Dozier eliminated. The families of those 30,000 are very, very appreciative. I, I can't imagine 60 years of service and watching so many children coming to this world. The, the, the kids that you have had in your hands have probably gone on to be doctors, lawyers, and, and, and great people in our community and around this world. And that's something to be very, 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 very proud of, and we're proud that, that you did it right here in Leon County. Thank you.
Chairman, this is really, it's not a stretch. It's, it's, it's more than a stretch. It's a quantum leap. And, um, School Board Member Jones could appreciate that, um, as the only private medical provider, uh, there across the street from Florida M. on Adams Street, um, a legacy of, um, generational, intergenerational legacy of providing medical service. But to have started a practice with Dr. Anderson, who was my, um, my, um, physician, uh, growing up, um, Dr. Baker in that corridor, Dr. Brickler, and for the name of, uh, Dr. Brickler, A.D. Brickler, to be on the Women's Pavilion recently opened, um, that's a chasm and a gap that only hard service and contribution could have warranted. Um, from Adams Street to the name on the TMH Hospital is a incredible, um, achievement in one life, um, one life of service. That's tremendous. And for everything that it portends, um, Dr. Brickler, uh, is well noted. God bless you.
One last thing.
Go ahead, Commissioner Maddox.
When Commissioner Proctor mentioned the school system, it made, it brought to mind, um, School Board Member Jones and, and Ms. Walker. To put it, to put it in perspective, we have 37,000 Leon County students right now, about 37, 35,000. Dr. Brickler's given birth, uh, provided. The hands, not given, provided the hand. They have assisted.
Yes.
In 30,000 births. I mean, that, that could create a school system. That is, that is absolutely amazing.
That's larger than Walco.
Absolutely amazing.
Quite a, uh, quite a legend, uh, Dr. Brickler. We thank you so much for allowing us to honor you today. Thank you so much.
All right.
All right. Um, Mr. Administrator, we are moving on to our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda to be pulled?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. We have one consent item pulled, item four, by Commissioner Proctor.
Move the remaining of consent.
All right, move the remaining items other than item four. Moved by Commissioner Deloge, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's almost amazing, uh, that we just honor the man who's assisted, uh, more babies are, are coming through the turnstile of life, uh, that we recognize, Dr. Brickler, and we would go directly to the, uh, medical examiner's issue. Uh, so we, you know, hit the starting point of life, and now we want to look at item number four, uh, with the endpoint of life. Isn't that amazing? Um, I wanted to, um, for, um, for our administrator, our staff, to make a presentation of what I think is a, um, significant, uh, new contribution to Leon County, as well as, uh, surrounding counties. And we've put a whole lot of energy, this has been coming down the pipeline for, um, wow, a few seasons now. And I felt, uh, it, it need to be tucked away, uh, on consent, but certainly to illumine, uh, its significance, uh, I, I wanted to receive a report, an update, uh, if the administrator was so willing.
Mr. Administrator? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Well, you all recall, uh, based on your action back in 2015, uh, we brought an item to you whereby, uh, TMH, um, uh, was putting us on notice, uh, they had been providing space for the medical examiner's office for many years. Uh, that's not something that, that they, they had to do, but it was a responsibility that they undertook. And they approached us, um, given the service and given our statutory responsibility relative to the, to the medical examiner's office, certainly a, um, a responsibility that we, that we always, um, participated in. But again, it was previously housed at TMH, and, uh, and they just simply outgrew their space. You all gave us the direction of the time to, uh, sell, you will recall, our Blairstone, uh, property near Public Works, uh, to cash flow, for lack of a better term, the remodeling of an existing space on Municipal Way, which was previously, um, uh, used for mosquito control. That facility, um, is, is it, uh, almost done? I'm looking over at Alan, he's very hands-on. I'll defer to Alan in just a moment. Uh, but, uh, the item before you delineates the, uh, the new agreement on medical examiner and county responsibilities regarding the operation of that facility. And for, uh, just a little more, Commissioner Proctor, why don't I defer to Alan?
Commissioners, the, as the administrator said, we're, we're close to finalizing the actual construction, and we're working closely with the medical examiner on the terms and conditions of how the facility to be used. The agreement in front of you outlines our responsibilities, as well as the medical examiner's responsibilities. As the administrator said, the medical examiner is a regional medical examiner. He's an eight-county area appointed by the governor. Um, the, the way the structure is laid out is that we will, he'll operate the building as medical examiner on a day-to-day basis. We'll turn over the keys to the medical examiner. We'll provide some of the overall custodial and security and things of that nature. The cost is a cost-share operation. Anybody from an outlying county will be paying the medical examiner a fee for the use of the building. Those dollars will then flow back to us for the operation of the building. We currently pay TMH a fee for use of their building, so the dollars we're paying from TMH, we're reallocating in the budget to take care of our operation. And then there's a small amount of money for him to do some additional autopsy work in the building that will come back as revenue to the county. And we'll bring all the fees and structure to the board as part of the regular budget process. But ultimately, this is just laying out how we will work together in the use of that building, once it's open and finalized here in the next, hopefully, month or so.
Right. I wanted to, um, compliment our staff. This has been, um, moving parts, uh, to foster the levels of symmetry that have been required. Has been, um, an exquisite portrayal of, um, outstanding administrative, um, facilitation. And, uh, I thought that we could not allow, uh, a project this incredible, and for what it would bring to the community. Also involved, um, in, involved in this has been the Undertaker, uh, community they've had, uh, there have been players involved in your process, uh, as well as a number of other. This has been a beautiful project, really, the way you all have, uh, fostered its, um, movement, and I'm appreciative of it. And therefore, uh, with this report, uh, having been made, Ms. Voss almost called your name, and you were not even there. Yeah. I wanted Ms. Voss to capture, but Ms. Voss is not there, but, uh, the new Ms. Voss, I want you to capture, uh, the great work, and I want it on public record that, uh, that it would be a long time, a mighty long time, uh, that this community will see a, a facility like this, uh, with all of its moving parts, uh, come to fruition as it has, uh, in this item. And with that said, I'd like to move option one.
Second. All right, I'd like to, uh, recognize Commissioner Deloge, then we'll take a vote to, uh, the consent agenda.
Thanks, uh, Alan, thanks for your work on this. And I'd like to just, I think it's worth giving TMH a shout-out, too, because frankly, uh, this was something that they had in the middle of the hospital for as long, I mean, the last 20, 30 years. I mean, it's just basically, the hospital's kind of grown up around it, and it probably was not the most functional place, and it was really kind of a little bit of a, uh, mission of mercy on their part. I mean, there's some congruence there, but when they came to us and said, "We, we're running out of space here, we're running out of room, and we're really not supposed to be the primary provider here." So they really stepped up, and, uh, that's appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Deloge. With that said, approval of the, uh, consent agenda has been made by, or motion's been made by Commissioner Deloge, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We just need to do four, and then do the rest of the agenda separately. All right? Okay, well, then we'll approve, uh, item four. All right, so we have approved consent agenda, and now we'll move on to item four to approve. We have a motion.
So moved.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by same sign. Motion passes. Mr. Administrator, do we have any citizens to be heard on my agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes we do. We have one speaker, Mr. Stanley Sims.
Good evening. My name is, um, Stanley Sims. I'm at 3220 Avondale Way. Um, I want to apologize that I wasn't here to help you guys through the budget process, but I see that you all made it anyway. But, um, I came today because, um, as you know, there is an issue in our community of, of public safety. And I have been on this beat for about three and a half years, um, about fair wages. I just really believe that fair wages will take us to, uh, bridge the gap, the economic gap that we have in our community, especially in the 32304 zone. I have been working with, um, Dr. Tom Taylor, um, Commissioner Dozier, and, um, and I just call your name because I followed up on some of the advice you gave me about a year and a half ago. And what we are doing is now, we're trying to vet what we call a fair wage co-op, where we will pay individuals a starting salary of $11 an hour, but also usher them to entrepreneurship. And so, we have a proposal in together, and we've put together, um, in, in doing so, Vince, me and my shy, soft-spoken way, um, I made the mistake of marketing this as a Stanley program. And so, we have scratched that and started all over. And now we have a coalition of some of our sustainable partners, like TCC, Kimberly Moore is on board. Um, I don't want to call any more names because the TV camera's running, and I don't want them to get scared off. But we have a very good coalition that we are, you know, coming together and trying to vet this so that we can bring economic relief to some of these high-crime areas. Now, I said all of that because I only got about 50 more seconds, is I need you guys to put some skin in the game. Because if you don't put any skin in the game, then you will say you care, and it'll let you float off. But if you give me a few taxpayer dollars, then you will monitor our group and make sure that our outcomes, oh, that's 30 seconds, make sure our outcomes are what they are. The city of Tallahassee is giving, we, we are going to our large business partners like TMH, um, Capital Regional. I have a meeting tomorrow with Blue Florida. So this is a team effort, even with the city. Um, Leon County Schools has given positive commitment to this fair wage co-op. And so, I'm asking that you all, Mr. Vince, I, I have a tentative scheduled meeting to try to get a meeting with you, and that I could show you the proposal that has already been written up, um, where we are trying to bring fair wage jobs. It's getting hot, um, and I'm really concerned because the level of crime... Leon County Schools has given positive commitment to this fair wage co-op. And so, I'm asking that you all, Mr. Vince, I have a tentative scheduled meeting to try to get a meeting with you, and that I could show you the proposal that has already been written up, where we are trying to bring fair wage jobs. It's getting hot, and I'm really concerned because the level of crime in our areas, and I'm not trying to play a race card, but they're blacks. These kids that are dying are blacks. They look like my kids, my 23-year-old and my 16-year-old. And so, I've been taking that so personal that it has affected my health. And so, I'm learning, see how calm I am today? I'm not speaking, I'm just so nice. So I'm just asking you all to please consider, as you go through your budget areas, because it's not the typical CHSP proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Mr. Administrator, I think we're ready to move on to general business at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 16 is an item that seeks your acceptance of the first quarter 2019 economic dashboard report. We bring this item to you, Commissioners, quarterly. Ben Pingree is here, or Christina, not sure which one, but one of them is going to discuss, present this dashboard report to you. Also, Commissioner Deloze, you'll remember specifically asking for the, our local economic scorecard. Again, this is something that the board, the entire board, has expressed interest in. OEV has done a great job with this, and we'll be bringing that to you at least annually as well. And Christina will talk about that, too. So with that, Christina Brenness.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be here today to present with you our 2018 competitiveness report. And just wanted to highlight some of our rankings that we received this past year. Right here, we kind of include these in all the information that we push out and market on behalf of our community. Most recently, we received, we were ranked number 54 by livability.com, the top 100 places to live. There were very few Florida communities in there. And most importantly, we climbed up the list from last year. So hopefully, next year, we'll break that top 50 mark. So that's something that we're watching closely as a team. When you look at our competitiveness annual report, together as a team, we talked about, we knew that we needed to take a look at other communities around the state and across the nation and how we, and compare ourselves. So this, for all intents and purposes, is our scorecard. It's an annual tool that we use to measure our successes and challenges and see how we rank against our peers. And we use this information to improve our economic competitiveness. We are compared against 11 different communities, which are all, you know, some of them are state capitals, they're cited in our Economic Development Strategic Plan, they're in the southeast region, their population is similar, and they have a comparable portion of college students as well. And then there are five main categories that we do this comparison against. And you see, well, I just wanted to highlight a few of them for you today. We're ranked number four in our talent index. This kind of includes educational attainment and labor force are two subcategories. Innovative capacity, so you're looking at patents, research grants, that's what types of metrics are included in there. And in entrepreneurial and business environment, those are businesses that are self-employed, and the density of those businesses. Our vitality index shows that we're ranked number one here as well. And that shows private job growth, GDP per capita, and our industry diversification and wage growth as well. And our civic quality, we rank number nine here on this list, and this includes cost of living and crime rate, just to name it two. And I should note that the civic quality index here, this is using 2016 crime data statistics. This is something that our team is going to do on an annual basis. This is our first scorecard that we've completed this year, and really looking forward to presenting the 2019 one to you at the December IA meeting. In your attachment as well was our first quarter economic report. Since this was produced last Friday, we received an updated job count of our March numbers. And I just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of that as well. Most impressively is the year-over-year number for our private sector job growth. It was at 4.7%, so this is comparing March of this year to March of last year, and that's the highest it's been since 2007. So that number really stuck out, and I wanted to make sure that I brought that to your attention, as we continue to monitor that private sector job growth. Because as you know, our GDP is mostly all within the private sector, coming in about 69% in 2017. And our unemployment rate continues to remain low. For all intents and purposes, this means that we have a very tight labor market with high labor force participation rate. And then you can see the classification of our job growth industry below as well. Again, year-over-year, so March from last year to March of this year. And your next competitive, or your next economic indicator report will be published in June, June of this year, and will be brought to you at your IA meeting, and then subsequently to the county commission meeting as well. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have today.
Motion made for Option 1 by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Marion Lynn Lee. We have a few Commissioners in queue to speak. Commissioner Deloze.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Christina. Really, I'm kind of excited about this kind of thing. Is there, well, we put this on the website, so when you bring up the county website, you can actually tag into the, prior to what you, when you had the, just the, either that one or the other, that one. Yeah, one of, you know, one of those so that it's just there, front and center. Is it doable to kind of tag that in on our website? I mean, if we've got this stuff, we ought to share it.
Absolutely. We'll work with the CMR to make that happen.
And then I was going to see if maybe Kerry could put it maybe on the Visit Tallahassee piece, too. And which brings up another piece of information. The Greenville, the Greenville people, you know, they made the comment that tourism is the first date for economic development. And I'm just, I'd like to maybe at some point have a conversation, if you guys are willing to, maybe staff can bring something back as an agenda item to talk about cross-pollinization, about how we can make sure that things that you're doing, Kerry's up to speed on, and things that Kerry's doing, you guys are up to speed, so that you can kind of play off each other. Because I think there's a lot of synergy between the two, and maybe, it would, I think it just would be helpful, leadership was somehow overlapping, so. Yeah. I would add that as an amendment to that motion, then.
Attaching it to our...
To approval of this report, if that's okay.
So approval of this, attaching to the option of approving it, adding it to our website, our county website.
Well, add it to the website, but that's kind of a non-starter. But the more important thing, I'd love to have some kind of agenda item brought back to talk a little bit about how we can cross-pollinate OEV and TDC. Because I think that tourism and economic development group really ought to be working hand in hand.
They already are.
Okay.
Yeah, every day. Very closely, every day, all the time.
Okay. So if it's being done, then probably don't need, but I'd like to know, I mean, I didn't know how close they were working.
Sure. And we'd be happy to bring a status report back to you.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Proctor.
So Commissioner Deloze, you okay? Status report?
Yeah.
So I'll accept the amendment as a status report coming back from staff.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Proctor, I'm sorry. Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chairman, we hate to take exception. Could report all of these indexes, but on the talent index, attachment 1, I disagree with whoever did this that was posted April 15 for 2019. And they managed to indicate that when it comes to the talent index, that our community is number four. So they have Lansing, Michigan, Trenton, New Jersey, and Madison, Wisconsin. So I disagree with that, but one thing I can say, and I wanted to, you know, Google just now, that for instance, in Lansing, Michigan today, the temperature, Google just told me, was like 50 degrees, and the low going to be 35. So they can have that. Trenton, New Jersey today is not what we got down here either. And Wisconsin is 59 today, and all of that. So they might, whoever wrote this up, that we have more talent than we do. But I doggone dare anybody to say that we don't have better weather. So for what we may not have in talent, Christina, you tell them that Proctor said, we've got them beat on the weather.
Absolutely.
We better than Wisconsin, we better than New Jersey, and we better than Michigan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, from the Weather Channel expert, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Christina. I appreciate the report. I'm glad we're doing this quarterly, whether here or blueprint meetings. It's good to keep this information fresh, and you all have so much more data you're including every single time we do the report. So really appreciate that. I know you've got some new talent in your shop, multiple people, so I'm glad you've got a team that is robust enough to keep moving this forward. So, and there was a good article this week also about a few leads, we'll leave that aside, but it sounds like you all are very busy, and we really appreciate that. With that, just one question, but I wanted to piggyback real quick on Commissioner Deloze's comment about tourism. I can certainly wait for the staff report. I just wanted to say that I think we know that the staff is working closely together, and I'm glad to hear that. The outward-facing portion, I think there is some things we could do to align our tourism conversation with recruitment efforts or things like that. A lot of us saw a different piece of that in Greenville, that everyone in Greenville owned the hashtag, "It wasn't just for marketing." So I'm really excited about the conversation that I've heard you all have, but also Kerry from tourist's side with that. And in our briefing, talking about the item on apps, and noted the tourism app, there may be some ways to really push that and have more synergy in marketing the bike lanes, the bike paths that you mentioned earlier, all of those different types of things. So I just wanted to mention that. I mean, the, this recruitment push, why we're a good place for employees to transfer, for people to stay, other things. I think there's a lot of great synergy, so thanks for mentioning that. To a question about Greenville. So, got your email. It may have been worked on within the shop. I think it came to the county administrator from Ben, wrap-up and takeaways from our trip. I think, similar to what was in that email, I found a lot of good information in Greenville, a lot of indication we're on the right track. There was only a couple lines about talent and workforce. So I'm glad comparatively, our numbers are pretty good, but we keep coming back to the question of how do we do more apprenticeships? How do we increase the training for our workforce, increase the wages? Heard comments just a few minutes ago about increasing those wages. Those are important, too. So I don't know if you have an answer right now, but I hope we can dig into this more at the blueprint meeting. Are there ways that OEV could pull together the various partners that are working on the talent pipeline right now? And try to think about better coordination, which was, I think, for a lot of us, the key takeaway from the Greenville folks, that their workforce pipeline is working with K-12, businesses, recruiting, all of those types of things. So I just wouldn't mind you speaking to that point, and if we need to wait until June, you'll let us know that as well.
Absolutely. Commissioner, we work with our partners in workforce development all the time. It's very pivotal. And when you're talking with a company on building out that pipeline, both TCC and Lively are very proactive in those engagements. We sit across the board on Career Source together and continue to meet to have these conversations on how best to work together to build that talent pipeline, either specifically for a company in general who's asking for, or across the community as well. So those are very important things, and we're continuing to have those meetings on that topic. And we can provide a more thorough update for you at our next IA meeting.
That would be great, if that works for the agenda. For my part, I think the conversations that are happening are better than we've ever had. We are moving forward, but there, I'm hearing similar comments from a lot of those partners that they want to push the collaboration. They see there's a next step. So I'm glad we're working together. I think having a summary of where we are might help all of us figure out if there is a next step or what else we could do. So I'd welcome that report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Maddox, and then we'll vote on the amended motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lynn and I were just speaking about the disconnected youth portion there, and 16 and 19, also the 25 to 34-year-olds. I sent an email to the county administrator. As you all know, I'm the chief elected official of the, of our Career Source, our Calabria Career Source Board here. And at our last meeting, they talked a lot about apprenticeships, and I challenged that board to really start to take the mantle and really push federally qualified apprenticeship programs. Lively was there as well, and the conversation went round and round. And one of the things that they came to, the conclusion they came to is the same one that we heard probably about two or three years ago, in that the problem is, it's hard to get businesses to sign up. The question I then had was, well, who is in charge of going out and finding those businesses? Who's on first when it comes to that? And the answer I got back was, well, we don't know. And so, that brought me some trouble, because that 16 and 19 range is, there's money out there to be spent on these young people. And there's, and these federally qualified apprenticeship programs are the places for them to go, and frankly, the 25 to 34-year-olds, too. Lively is a sponsor that could, very well put those folks from being on the street, not being connected, into career paths. And I want, I want us as a board, or to join in, trying to find out how we can sign up more businesses to be a part of the program. To me, it's a no-brainer for a business to want to bring in a young man or a young woman at a much lesser rate than they would full-time. I mean, for those who understand it, I mean, you've got a 15-hour, $15-an-hour job, if you hire a regular employee, well, with the federally qualified apprenticeship, you can bring that same employee in at $10 an hour, and then that $10 an hour can be subsidized by a fund through Career Source. So out of pocket, the employer may be only paying $5 an hour for someone who is potentially a $15-an-hour employee. I don't see how businesses aren't jumping all over this. And the response I got, well, Commissioner, it comes down to them being able, them taking the time away to train these folks, and the commitment, the year, the two- or three-year commitment it is to train these young people. But when you look at saving $25,000 a year and getting labor out of it, I think, Mr. Gasby, when you say it's worth it? I say it's worth it. I think any business owner would say it's worth it, if it's sold the right way. And so, I did, I reached out to the county administrator, sent an email and asked if we could get a meeting going with OEV, myself, and maybe Career Source, to see how we can be more aggressive in getting these businesses to sign up to be federally qualified apprenticeship programs. It's just, it's just a shame that we don't have more. And so, I'm hoping that out of that meeting comes about some kind of, some kind of system or some kind of program that, that really can engage these folks who are out here, who just honestly just need an opportunity, and businesses who want to take the interest and train them a little bit. Because those trainees become valuable parts of businesses once they get their full training. So I look forward to having that meeting, but I wanted to put it on your radar, because I just, that 16 and 19, that's prime, that's prime real estate for those young people to get involved in apprenticeship programs. But we got to be aggressive. We can't just sit back and wait for those businesses to want to sign up. We got to show them how much of an asset and how great of an asset this program could be to their businesses. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lynn, and then we'll vote on the amended motion.
Yeah, just a comment or two on the apprenticeship. We are working with the legislature to try to get some funds to help boost our efforts at apprenticeships training, because I know a lot of what you say is true. A lot of businesses don't really know where to start with an apprenticeship program or how to, you know, truly train and get that sort of thing going. So Andy, I mean, you're kind of keeping us up to date on, I think it's a $50,000 appropriation that we're hoping for, that would be in part to give a boost to apprenticeship efforts. So we'll be following that. We know it's a tough one.
Commissioner Dozier, your own point.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was not going to mention this, I was going to save it for June, but since we're leaning in a little bit more on the apprenticeship question, and I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Maddox, and yours, of course, but from the Career Source Board, because I'm hearing a lot of the same things, I think we all are, about getting businesses into this pipeline. So whether it is in this discussion, or we bring this up in June at our IA meeting, I had a conversation with Kim Moore from TCC, who really celebrates the partnership with OEV, Career Source, others. She asked about a community-wide job fair, similar to our Leon Works event, but something where we bring the various job fairs together, businesses... where we bring the various job fairs together, businesses may be more willing to participate if there was one big job fair, and it would be an opportunity to do business training at the same time, get them signed up for these type of programs. So, this is a conversation we had last Friday, and this is exactly what I think we're all feeling, is that many of us are having the same conversations and it's good, wonderful to have them at the staff level. I want to make sure I know what others are doing when we're asked about that and if there is something like a job fair that could help us hit a few of these different things, connect people with jobs, but also work with businesses, I would really love to explore that idea. I don't know if that has been presented in any of your meetings, it kind of came organically in a conversation, but I would love to think about that idea or others when we get into blueprints in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure, Commissioner De Loj, I capture this correctly, that we will go with option one that was made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Lindley, with the add-on of an agenda item being brought back regarding the status and the working relationship between TDC and OEVs. How about you, Ms. Administrator? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All right. Opposed, by the same sign. All right, motion carries. Next item, Mr. Administrator, thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item seeks your consideration for the county to contract with private sector firms to perform additional building plans review services on an as-needed basis. As we explain in the item in detail, your authorization of this action will allow us to continue to provide the efficiency in the permit process we seek and will provide just another tool for us, especially in dealing with the cyclical fluctuations in permitting activities. And we're recommending option one, that we procure these services, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner De Loj. Seeing no Commissioners in queue to speak, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item seeks your approval of a bid award to Oliver Sperry Renovation and Construction for renovations in the state attorney's office. You may recall, we performed similar renovations to the public defender's office previously. In both cases, this was due to pre-trial probation, moving out of the courthouse and providing the opportunity for much-needed expansion renovations. It's all been properly budgeted. We're recommending option one, and I have no speakers on this item.
Move option one by Commissioner Lindley, seconded by... Pardon me, you can hear me better when I do that. Seconded by Commissioner De Loj. We do have Commissioner Proctor in queue to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to know about the MVE participation. Is it relaxed, waived, or is it applicable in this contract?
Chairman, Commissioners, there was an aspirational target assigned to this job as we reported in the analysis of your item. Neither or none of the bidders made the full aspirational target. However, the low bidder did receive from us good faith certification, that they went in good faith and tried to meet those aspirational targets. That's something that we'd be happy to answer more questions about if you have. I know Darryl Jones is here, who performed that due diligence on that job. But again, we were able to determine that our low bidder did make a good faith effort to meet our aspirational targets.
What does good faith mean in this particular instance?
Darryl, could you come on up and address that? Thank you.
Yes, Commissioners, the award, the bid winner, we did the research on the good faith that they submitted. The goal for this project was seventeen and nine, however, the award winner was, came in at three percent. However, he provided good faith effort to show that he made attempts to identify those contractors to participate on the job. In our verification of their good faith effort, we then called the persons that they included as a part of their good faith effort, and they were all unavailable.
Okay. I am very disappointed in this particularly, I mean, this is what you call not even falling off the wagon, this is not even on the wagon. And I just wish that there was a way that we could not award this particular contract and that we would slow this down and send it back out.
Well, if I may, Commissioner, if I may, what we are discovering with a great number of our projects, because of the frequency and the amount of work that's being made available for our subcontractors, both with our projects, municipal projects, and private projects, a great number of them are coming back that's non-responsive and that's subsequently reflected in our good faith efforts, because the contractors are busy and are unable to participate sometimes when we put our bids out. So, that's why we now go back and we verify that the good faith effort that the respondent provides is indeed accurate, and we speak with the subcontractors directly, and they also verify to us their unavailability.
I see. I just happen to know, Mr. Jones, that, and I trust everything that you're saying. But I just know that when it comes to the state attorney's office, that eighty percent of the people that you're going to see being prosecuted downstairs are black.
Yes.
And not but three percent of the, when money is being spent to remodel that office down there, only three percent of the participation of the dollars will go to somebody who's black. It's just incongruent with the realities of who the state gets to prosecute over, over, every day, all day long, twice on Tuesdays. It's amazing. It is, in fact, the, it is an excellent case study of not only Leon County, but America. And you think about the prosecutor's loaded docket of prosecutions of black people, and when you look at the dollars of government, and even if you're working on the state attorney's office, now if this was free labor and you brought up a jail crew, you'd see quite a different story. But this happens to be for hire and it makes it a totally different reverse standard. This is America, this is where we live, I live, and it's sad, yet poignant, that we're at this point. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner De Loj.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I think it's worth noting, and I agree, Commissioner Proctor, we certainly would like to do better in some of these cases, sometimes you can't. Look at the skew in the pricing, but with the storm that we had, I think the construction prices for our region are all over the place. And so, I think in this kind of case, you're going to find some real anomalies in pricing. And I think for almost double in this case, you have to take the bid that's somebody that's can do the work at a price. I mean, our job is to be as fair as possible, we also have to be judicious with the limited funds we've got. So, anyway, just a kind of a comment.
Commissioner, you suggesting that the use of black people makes the job more expensive or something?
Nope. My comment had to do with the storm, which pulled up every construction company within 500 miles and pushed them over west of here, so that there's real sporadic bidding now based on who's over there and who's not, so.
Depends on who's on first, huh?
Yeah.
Commissioner Minor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Jones, a quick question for you. Do you think this particular case is a symptom of a systemic issue that we might have with our assessment in our bids? Or you think that because of the construction-related, the hurricane, the temporary situation that we're right now, we're seeing this exhibited?
Well, Commissioner, I'm not an economist, but one of the things you may have noticed that Ms. Peretti's announced in her presentation about the three percent unemployment rate, every contractor will tell you that there is a dearth of available persons with specialized skills in all of our construction trades. That is why the talent pipeline is so important that Lively provides, as Lively tries to increase its recruitment of young people, most specifically in our high schools and our middle schools and finding trades as a viable option for employment and creating their careers, we will see a turnaround in the number of persons who are available to work in our present economy. Right now, although there is greater opportunity and options for businesses to expand, regrettably, there's not a talent pool available to meet that demand.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I share, I understand Mr. Proctor's comments, I think if this is, the responses you get for every bid are going to be different, right?
Yes.
Depending on the needs and the supply and the demand of labor and that kind of thing.
And it's about availability.
Yes.
A real great number of our subcontractors.
If this were, I'm still new to this rodeo, it's still my honeymoon, but if this were a recurring thing that was something that we would see on a regular basis, I'd be really concerned. I think in this one instance, given the trends that we've seen with the hurricane, the construction, the shortage in workers, you know, the need for people to go to Lively and fill some of those, some of those labor gaps, I think I can understand why we're in this situation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the bid on options one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Aye. Passes six, one. Next item up, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is a voluntary annexation proposal, which we are recommending upon our review, included in your analysis and as required by the comp plan, we are recommending that the county not object to the annexation, which is reflected in option one. We have no speakers on this item.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Lindley. Seconded by Commissioner De Loj. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Anyone, wait, I did have a speaker, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maddox. Okay. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks full board appointments to the Board of Adjustments and Appeal, Career Source, the EFA, the Tallahassee Sports Council, the Tallahassee Leon County Minority Women and Small Business, Enterprise Citizen Advisory Committee, and the Value Adjustment Board. All eligible applicants for each of the respective committees are included in options one through six. Mr. Chairman.
How do you want to take this? One by one? Is that the easiest way to do this?
Sure. Option one, Commissioners, seeks a full board appointment to consider one citizen, the eligible applicant Paul Patronas is listed there, for the Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
So.
Have a motion, Commissioner Maddox, second, Commissioner De Loj. Any other discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye. All right. Any opposed? All right, that's option one, or that's the first one.
Mr. Chair, as your Career Source appointee, I would make the motion for Thomas Isel.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Number three.
Move Reginald Ellis.
Second. I'd like to weigh in on this, but go ahead. Any other, any discussion? We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I was trying to remember the discussion we had, I think as far back as October, about appointments to the EFA board, and you had wanted to put a hold on this as our appointee, so.
Right. Let me, can I, yeah, let me weigh in.
Yeah, I think you have a few good applicants.
I'm the board appointee here, the Educational Facilities Authority, basically, for lack of a better term, is almost a real estate holding company right now. And so, a lot of the board members that are citizen board members, although well-intended, it's very complicated. There's A-bonds and B-bonds, and there's a lot of financial movement, and they've won a $6 million construction litigation lawsuit to try and redo all of Heritage Grove. So, I know Todd Sperry, who is one of the applicants in here, that's the business he's in. We've made an effort to try and put board members on there that have a real specific skill that can address it. So, for the next couple of years, barring any other unforeseen movement, they're going to have to figure out, as a citizen board, how to apply this $6 million to rebuilding basically all of the stuff out there at Heritage Grove. And it's going to be a workout. I mean, this is a pretty complicated situation. We've got Ramsey Sims on there, who's the, probably one of the most knowledgeable people in public finance, and he's been really good. And then Tom Proctor, who knows a lot about student housing. So, we've got a board on there now who's really knowledgeable. I would, without, no disrespect for Commissioner Proctor's appointee, I think Todd Sperry, from a construction standpoint, probably is heads and shoulders above.
If I could just weigh in on that too. I worked with Dr. Ellis on the Riley Board, he's a history professor, and I was also on the EFA for four years, almost four. And I also feel, you know, maybe the requirements for being on that board should be more directed towards property management and real estate and bond financing, because it is a heavy, heavy board.
It's hard.
And I thought it would support that. I mean, you know, Dr. Ellis is great, but I don't think he would have much fun on the EFA either, quite frankly.
With those things being said, in the area of, in the area, I think, I think what Commissioner De Loj and Lindsey are talking about, the area of expertise related to the function and subject matter, I withdraw Dr. Ellis, who is a history professor.
Yeah.
And now that you've lifted those concerns up, I see where you're coming from. I knew his name and I didn't know others as well.
Yeah. I'd move Todd Sperry.
Yes, since I'm no longer the chairman here, I'll make a motion that we nominate, or we appoint Todd Sperry in that position.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made to appoint Todd Sperry in that position, seconded by Commissioner Lindley. All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? As is unanimously.
Mr. Chair, as your Tallahassee Sports Council appointee, I would like to make the motion for appointment for James Card and Austin Moser.
Second. Good choices.
Motion has been made and seconded by Commissioner De Loj. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes.
What do this board do?
The Tallahassee Sports Council is in charge of two things. One, largest thing is granting out the dollars that are coming in through the TDC that are specifically used for sporting events coming, sports tourism, sporting events coming to Tallahassee and Leon County. I can't remember the number that we gave away last year, but it was a pretty nice number. The other thing is that we oversee, or oversee the business of the sports council, or employee going out to trade conferences to try to get more business, I'm sorry, more sporting events to come to Leon County. One of our largest victories, I think, in the past 10 years would probably be us being able to have the 3A state football championships right here in Leon County. Also, I will be remiss if I didn't mention also, the same group went out and got the NCAA finos cross-country here in Leon County, have done a lot of good work in bringing in sports tourism dollars into Leon County. One thing I would like to say, if I could say it in this moment, if you give me the liberty, Mr. Chair, is I think that that group could probably use a little more, a few more funds to go out and get more of those events, because I think they have done a great job of leveraging the dollars that we've had to use to go out and increase sports tourism. Does that answer your question?
I'm not sure, but Ms. Post is shaking her head like that, like it answered it, so yes, it did.
That did a good job, Carrie.
Carrie was doing this, and I said, well, okay, that answered it. The fact that I didn't understand, I mean, what she said, it answered, okay.
All right, I think we're on to option five.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for Matt Thursum and Kristi Hale.
Second motion. Does that require the...
And I would also like to add to that motion to waive the policy for Ms. Hale.
Okay.
Thank you, Christian.
Motion's been made and seconded by Commissioner Lindley, as well as waiving for Ms. Hale. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by the same sign. Unanimous.
I'll make a motion for option six, Gregory Cohen. Does that require the...
Yes.
Good choice.
Motion's been made for Gregory Cohen by Commissioner De Loj, seconded by Commissioner De Loj. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by the same sign. Motion passed.
Mr. Chair, I just noticed that of the appointments you guys are working, you have on three of these six boards, maybe four of the six boards. The board appointment for the Career Source Board appointment, for the Sports Council Board appointment, for Value Adjustment Board.
You're just popped there.
Thank you, I appreciate the work, Mr. ...
All right, Mr. Administrator. Mr. Administrator.
That concludes your general business items. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have no additional speaker cards. I'll just remind you that we have a 6:00 PM scheduled public hearing, and with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Mr. County Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything specific. Apparently, somebody has already mentioned, I won't reveal, because this is one of those mystery guest things, may bring up the issue of the high voltage power line issue. I do have a memorandum that you should have received electronically this afternoon, and hard copies as well, just to kind, and I'll be prepared to do an overview when, if that issue comes up. Other than that, I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Administrator.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Let's mix it up a little bit. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, want to say, good job, Mr. Chair. You've had a four days' work with our board, with our budget workshop, and now our board meeting. Want to say again, good job for staff, good job this morning with staff, bringing us back a very, 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 very good budget, with a lot of innovative things involved, but still being a maintenance budget, but that's what you guys do, I appreciate that. During the workshop, not workshop, but during the item we spoke of earlier about economic development, I did talk a little bit about the federally certified apprenticeship programs. I spoke to staff, at some point, I don't think it's time for it yet, but I want us to be more educated on what that actually means for the businesses, and what that means for, for the whole system as a whole. I thought about maybe asking for a workshop today, Mr. Administrator, in efforts to moving towards the meeting that I asked you to schedule, do you think it'd be, may be a bit premature, not immature, but premature, to ask for that workshop today, or that agenda item today? Should I save it maybe the next meeting?
Maybe let's have the meeting and see where we go from there, and then we can come back and schedule.
Okay.
Be great. Thank you.
All right, well, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Maddox, I had a very good, I guess, role model as a vice chair. I appreciate the kind compliment.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lindley.
Oh, thank you. Only a lawyer can declare a six-page, single-spaced, probably 10,000-word document, a memo on next era energy, but I look forward to reading every word. Thank you.
All 10,000 words.
What was I going to say? Well, it's a different, different lingo. Yes, I would like to ask for a proclamation from the FSU College of Medicine, a researcher there, recognizing Perinatal Mental Health Awareness Week as the second week in May to present at our second week in May meeting. If I could, may I get a second on that? Thank you.
Recognize Mental Health Awareness Week. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Passes.
And also, thanks very much to the staff. I mean, we've made it through a pretty solid day of work fairly well. Thank you for everything you all have done to make it easy and clear. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chair, I request, when you meet with the, with the mayor and the mayor chair meeting, that he take a look at my call in quest that the city would annex, take the city down to Capitol, at least Capitol Circle, he can cross it, but I just think that it has just been forever and a day in coming. And actually, once upon a time, it's my understanding that that USA line went down to Capitol Circle, and somehow, prior to my arrival, the line was erased. I don't know the accurate history, but when the city's urban service area expands miles beyond Capitol Circle, North Side, East Side, and that's a far greater distance from City Hall, but in your meeting, please note to the mayor that his government refuses to annex and offer the services to population that is contiguous, it, all of those things. I appreciate it. I wanted to note that Commissioner Maddox is going to become our president of the Florida Association of Counties. There about early June, 11th through 13th, our Florida Association of Counties Annual Conference, and I'm somewhat thinking it might well be on the 13th, that Thursday, I imagine, but I wanted to, for the good of the order, to encourage Commissioners, if your schedules would permit, us supporting our, our leadership, leadership coming from this board. And over the years, I have tried to practice what I preach in supporting members off this desk who extend leadership to state or national efforts, and to be collegial, completely collegial and supportive. I intend to do something that I typically don't do, and that's go to the Florida Association of Counties, their annual conference, but because my colleague is there, I'm going to go this year, and I encourage all of our attendance, if we can, if we can make it. Y'all going to have some good food, food down there, Mr. Chair? I don't want a weak, you know, celebration that evening. Okay, good, good. All right. Yes, sir.
Lot of Kool-Aid.
Lot of Kool-Aid, all right. I'm wondering if we could revisit our ordinance that if we have an ordinance for setback requirement of cars that sit at intersections and are being offered for sale, and you can't see oncoming traffic. I'm wondering if we could please look at our ordinance, that we have all these bushes and trees that block, and you can't see at intersections, and if we could, you know, do something about those kinds of things. And I know that our staff attempts to manage the brush, and it been raining a little bit, and you know, when it gets a little rain, that stuff just leap. But Rashonda, you all, we need you all to look at those corners, because traffic is just hard to see at these intersections, and I don't know what to set back, or do we need some revisement? I think, Herb, you indicated that we're going to be doing a revise on the ordinance. Could you just tell us a little bit what you were sharing with me recently, on the revision of our ordinances and stuff?
All right, two-part. One, we don't have anything with regard to the vehicle setback, that they're not permitted to be on the right-of-way to begin with, and your local LCSO deputy would be more than welcome to give them a ticket if, so there are regulations, not from us. The new code is almost complete. It should be on your agenda in May or June for adoption. It's a complete redo of your entire code of laws with your names on them, among other things, and I think you'd be pleased that the product, it has cleaned up considerably a lot of the issues in the code, not, not so much duplication, but we've consolidated, for example, definitions. They're not in 50 places, now they're in one place for the land use section, for example. And, but I, I'm kind of thinking that probably your June meeting, your June meeting might be a whopper, by the way, just based on things that I know that are coming through the pipeline, but, so it'll, it'll be ready to go. But I'll be glad to send you all, Mr. Chairman, if that's your desire, a memo just outlining what we do and what we don't have in the code for site distance issues.
Okay, very good. Commissioners, I want to thank a whole bunch of people from city, county government, Leon County Schools, Tallahassee Chamber, Capital City Chamber, Big Ben Chamber, OEV, FAMUTCC, United Way, FSU, County Commissioners, NIBA, for your support, Tallahassee Housing Authority at the 32304 Prosperity for All Summit. It was excellent, excellent turnout. I've never seen the cross-section of people who was in that room. I've never seen all of them in the room under the same roof at the same time to deal with an issue, the matter of poverty in our community. I wanted to request an agenda item. I'm guilty of having requested an agenda item before, and I wanted to ask again if we could agenda that our board might take a look at something in our county. What I'm very excited about is that from this summit, we have those entities that are begging to help, offering to help. And even though school superintendent Rocky Hannah and I, we don't, you know, eat popcorn out the same box on a regular basis, he gave one of the greatest superintendent speeches I've ever heard that morning, declaring the need that we no longer just talk, but throwing the gauntlet down and stating it's time for various entities to walk. So we've done one meeting, we want to process three others, and I want to thank our staff for their assistance in all of that. Matt, Brittany, Steph, Vince, all y'all help us to, and Rachael did a noble job. We're planning three additional summit meetings with a conclusion to have recommendations to the various entities of the county, the city, school board, everybody there. I really need y'all help. I'm asking for your help. I'm kind of like the man with no country, but I love all the county, but I need y'all help. The people need your help. This community needs y'all, and I'm not sure what it would take to qualify for this matter to be an agenda item that you might, that we might fully disclose the reach, the, yeah, the reach of inclusivity of partners in this community. And though I am elected as a county commissioner, it would really feel and even look better if my colleagues was at the table and you all were prized, and I'm not out there, I mean, I'm going to do it with or without you, I'd do my best, but it would certainly feel good if y'all would walk with me in this effort forward. So I'd like to offer a motion for an agenda item, and Rachael has told me to put down on the 14th, but my daughter's graduating that weekend, and I won't be in town at that meeting. I don't try to stack the deck, because I'm not going to be here, Vince, and say, Proctor not going to be at that meeting on the 14th. I might do it what Deluge does, I might call in and meet with y'all on the phone. I doubt it. But nevertheless, I'd like to put it down on the 28th, because I want to be here. We probably would have had a meeting by the 28th in May, the second meeting, but county, I need y'all. I mean, Stanley Sims was in here today, he said, he needed us. All these people we giving some money to that need us. 32304, historic, old, they done paid a whole lot of taxes to this county, and right now they shooting kind of bad. And, you know, sometimes you note the egalitarian stripes of a human being are often garnered in terms of our response when, when a community is down, and we need y'all. And I'm making a motion that we could agenda that, and potentially, for what our government might make some itty-bitty steps as a partner with other entities to lift up 32304. I know, and it kind of, it bothers me a little bit, when our government and its leaders can go way up to Greenville, South Carolina, to see about their economics, and can't see, you know, a few blocks down the street, the 32304. Greenville need us to come up there and show them what to do, I know, but man, we need y'all, too. You know, we can look that far, can we see this close? And that's why I'm making the motion to agenda this, y'all, on the 28th, if, if you, if you think it's warranted.
I'm wondering if you said the agenda, or what is that?
It's going to do what I just said. It's going to give, disclose to you the vision, the goal, what we're doing, where we are, and to look at the possibilities of our government, the school board, and others. What we don't have is additional, we don't have funding at all to do some of the lifting that's required. You know, I can say this, they said this, NIBA, the issue, two issues ago, NIBA did the sponsorship, and you have, NIBA said that we have never, ever done a social effort to look at poverty, do anything sociological, that's not what we about. But NIBA said that the need for, and I was intending to go to their luncheon today, but we, y'all needed me up here to give guidance, so that's why I stayed. NIBA did the heavy lifting, saying exactly what was said a few moments ago, that we don't have enough bricklayers in our community. We don't have enough people that know how to fix a heater in our community. We're importing nurses into our hospitals for this community, and it was the dwindling quality of the workforce which NIBA stepped forward, Capital City Chamber showed up, Big Ben showed up, Tallahassee showed up, but NIBA did the lifting and came to the table and assisted with resources, saying that we can't have a black hole, lost talent, lives, and they recognize the need for, as did the superintendent, for vocational possibilities and a focused effort on kids, two years old, three years old, up to 12, in fixing the situation. To enhance the life outcomes, Commissioner Maddox, you know, when you, when you grow up, po, you sometimes need someone else to help you. And when you in quicksand, ain't but one way to get out. You have to have someone standing on solid ground to leverage yourself against in order to get out of quicksand. We got folk in quicksand, and our government can be the solid ground with which we're all leaning in with our respective resources to pull people out. So I can't say that no clearer than that. That's, you don't get it, you don't get it.
Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Proctor, I was looking for some clarity as well. Like Commissioner Maddox said, my memory is we've taken up the discussion a couple times about the summit. I was out of town, I believe I was told a lot of our staff, some of the commissioners, others were there, and the attendance was great. I heard a lot of great things about it. So I appreciate your efforts. I think my struggle with this has been, it was your initiative, and it wasn't a full board initiative. So if you would like to do something that moves it into a full board initiative, looking at what happened at the last meeting and what's happening in other parts of the community, we've got a lot of similar conversations going on. There are a lot of things happening. I know you've, you've mentioned this before, we've all talked about that in this area. It is District One and District Two, I believe, Mr. Chair, and it's not the only area that is having a lot of issues. So I don't mind supporting an agenda item that comes back, that reflects on the summit and talks about how we could move forward in support as a county commission. I guess that's a distinct, to me, than if you've already got a plan in the works, and I, I just had some confusion about that. So if we could just have a general item to keep this moving forward. So if we could just have a general, um, item to keep this moving forward, Mr. Chair, that may be a better time for us to dig into the details.
Um, does that satisfy your ask, Commissioner Proctor?
Um, yeah, I have, you know, asked this board previously for help. Um, I heard Stanley Sims today said, you know, I came down here one time and I asked, and that was Stanley, I was asking. He said, "Today I come back with collaboration and it ain't just me, it's other people." And before I ask you all, I guess it was just me. I come back to you all and I say that there are lots of other people. They've signed their names, they showed up, and y'all still don't get it. Um, I'm trying not to scream, but I said all I know to say. So I don't know what else to say, these people need help.
Commissioner Proctor.
I've been asking you. What else, I, I mean, has been, did NIBA require what?
No, it's not, Commissioner Proctor, but last time you came to us, you asked us for resources. I, I imagine that this time, what I'm hearing you say, and that's why, that's why I asked for clarity, is what I understood you to say is that you want to, to provide a report, to, uh, agenda item would provide a report to this board on what actually occurred and how we can move forward in collaboration with the rest of the committee. And I just wanted to make sure that's what you were asking for because the ask you had last time was different than the ask that I'm perceiving that you have this time. And as Commissioner Dozier said, if, if that's the ask that you have this time is that you, that this board, uh, be provided a report from the summit and then from that report also talk about how we can collaborate with other community partners to address the things within that, within that report, uh, I, I could, I could, I could move in that direction and support that too, but I want to make sure that I know what I'm seconding before I, before I give it a second because you spoke very generally when you first spoke about wanting an agenda item.
Well, if I fell in the water and said, "Oh, hell," or if I'd have said, "I'm drowning," or if I'd have said, "Help," I mean, there's a number of ways when you fall in the water to respond to, "Oh, Lord." And so if I spoke differently the last time, it was a variety of, "I'm in the water drowning and people are too," Commissioner Maddox. So if my words were not, let me do this. No, 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 no. I don't want, I want to withdraw. I want to think about all that you've said. I'm not articulate enough to say to you, "Help." Let me rethink it and I'll bring it back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, one, one thing Commissioner Proctor is, and I think, I think I mentioned this at the 32304 Prosperity for All Summit, I can't remember, but, um, sometime in the next month, Feeding Florida, the statewide association of food banks, is coming out with a report, they're doing it for all the counties in Florida, but Leon County should be coming out in the next month or so. It takes, uh, a look at the census block level of poverty, food insecurity, et cetera. So we could take a look at 32304, which includes an analysis of those census block, um, data, uh, which will provide some things upon we can act. So when that comes out, we will, because of sunshine law, I can't meet with you, but we will make that available to the public. And that's something that, that's an example, the kind of thing that I think Commissioner Maddox is talking about in terms of things that we can act upon, you know, tangible things that we can take steps to, to act upon. I think everyone here agrees with you, this is a serious issue, serious issue. A big part of my working day is focusing on exactly these types of issues. Um, so when you talk to us about, about, um, about this, I, I think you're having very receptive perspectives here because I, I think we all spend quite a bit, not just me, I think we all spend a lot of time on this issue. Uh, I just, I, I, I think, I get the sense that the rest of the body here is, is looking for something that we can act upon. And so, um, when that Feeding Florida report comes out, I will find a way that I can share it with the group, and, uh, that'd be one thing that we can do to, uh, move things forward.
I'll point, I'll point to that. I, I just, what I want is if, because I think what Commissioner Proctor has laid here is a, is, is a good thing. And I do, for what, what I foresee is that eventually this report will come back to this board. I think Commissioner Dozier is in favor, and I am too, and I don't think anybody else up here is, uh, not in favor of it coming back. But in order for that information to come back, um, staff has to be abreast of what happened in that meeting, uh, as well as, as Commissioner Proctor in his office. So if I'm staff, I'm asking staff to pay attention to what's going on in those meetings because, um, I don't feel right in this moment asking for a report to come back in the agenda item because, Commissioner Proctor, you have taken the lead on this. Uh, but I do very much want to see a report come back, uh, from your summit, including with the things that Commissioner Minor has spoken about on ways we can collaborate, as you have said, with the community on, on how to, to, uh, approach the challenges that we may have in area code 32304. And so I'm almost asking you, you said you wanted to wait, to articulate, that's fine, but at some point, I'm almost asking you to ask for the agenda item that brings back the report so we can, we can take some steps based off of information that you were able to gather along with other information that we may be able to gather from staff and then other commissioners up here, uh, during your summit for us to be able to act upon.
Okay. Commissioner Proctor.
Well, I heard what everybody said, and that's what I, I will do tonight, um, this afternoon, um, words are really escaping me. What I might do is drive up to Greenville, South Carolina, and sit there for three nights and something will come to me on what to ask y'all. Right now it's not occurring in my brain. I've, um, said a lot, but I will come back on the 28th and have greater clarity with what to ask. Can, can we do that? By the 28th, I have a clear mind about what to ask.
Thank you.
I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Minor, Commissioner comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Charlotte Stewart Tilly, uh, is a 13-year-old Tallahassee resident who is inspired by Greta Thunberg. Um, she is the Swedish activist that started the school strikes worldwide as per action on climate change. Um, Charlotte and other students have led the movement here in Tallahassee. Now, if there's one thing, and there's probably only one thing worth skipping school for, I think taking action on climate change is probably it. So with that, I'd like to offer a motion to issue a proclamation recognizing, uh, Ms. Tilly and other students for leading the, the climate strike here in Tallahassee.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Yeah, exactly. And to be very clear to all the kids that are listening and watching, don't skip school unless it's for climate.
Yeah, I've been instructed to recuse myself for going and skipping school. I have to let, uh, Commissioner DeLode second it. But thank you, we'll make sure that's added to our proclamation.
Thank you. Um, on April 6th, uh, I attended the EMS Annual Safety Fair at the Governor's Square Mall. Uh, really good turnout, lots of families, lots of kids, uh, all of them having fun and learning about, um, uh, being safe. Uh, LCSO was there, TPD, EMS, of course, a lot of other partners were there. I, I, I drove in and just on a, on a lark almost, I pulled into the car seat safety checkpoint. You know, I consider myself a pretty conscientious parent, you know, I'm on top of installing my car seats in my car and, and I was pretty sure I did them right, but I, I pulled in nonetheless. And, uh, two paramedics checked my seats, gave me some advice on how to install one of them. I, I was off a little bit, um, but they pointed out that one of my car seats had been recalled. Now, when I bought the seat, I, I turned in the registration card, but it'd never been notified. Uh, so, and it had been recalled about a year ago. So I've been driving around for a year with my five-year-old in a seat that had been recalled. So what, what I just want to kind of tell everybody out there is that even if you, you think you're on top of things regarding your child safety seats, um, check them out, check them out. Go to the EMS webpage, uh, get some information about the car seat, um, uh, safety, uh, information that they have. There's also a national website you can go to, put in the model of your car seat and see if it's been recalled. Just because you registered for it once, when you bought it, doesn't mean that you're going to be notified about its recall. So I learned my, that lesson, I wanted to pass that on to all your parents out there.
Mr. Chair, he not only did not install the seat correctly, uh, he had a couple of recalled seats up there, he needed to, to maybe de-sy up some.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just.
You might want to get with him on that, uh, car seat number two.
Now, I installed it correctly, but one of the bells need a little bit of tightening, that was all on one of them, so. Um, and, uh, yeah. Uh, later that day, I, I went on the, uh, on an EMS ride-along and, um, uh, did the, the nighttime shift. And I, I tell you, uh, I saw, obviously I can't, because of confidentiality, I, I can't share details, but I saw and observed things that night that I will never forget. Uh, people's lives being changed, uh, families being impacted for, for the rest of their lives. Uh, I saw a really good team, I'm glad Chief Fabrin is here because he and his team are doing a tremendous job in this county, uh, not just with their own job function, but also working very closely with the sheriff's office, TPD, uh, the fire. Uh, I, I saw these folks work very closely together to protect lives and to keep people safe. And so I just wanted to thank you, Chief Abren, so wanted to thank, uh, Mrs. Kinney, Captain Kelly, Lieutenant's McLeod and McPhail, and paramedics Abels and Demond Braun, uh, really, uh, my, my chief of staff went on a ride-along the other day too, and I just wanted to thank you and your team, uh, for everything that you do as well as the collaboration that you have with our other first responders. It was just, I will never forget it, never forget it. Um, a couple of quick things here. Uh, I've got mobile office hours set, uh, for April 24th, that's tomorrow, at Milano Pizzeria from seven, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM.
You paying for it?
Well, yes, yes, I am springing for the appetizers. Um, Artie White, our own comp plan administrator, is our special guest. We're going to focus on comp plan updates. And I have noticed, I have noticed it as a public meeting. So if y'all would like to join us, you are more than welcome to come. Appetizers are on me. Um, tomorrow it's 5:30 at Milano's. Um, and the, the last thing, on May 6th, the Village Square and Leon County are jointly conducting a, a panel titled How We Grow From Here. You may have seen it, uh, on, on the slides up there. 6:00 PM, St. John's, May 6th. Uh, it's about how we can, um, how we can, how we can encourage smart growth and at the same time protect and preserve the things that we consider special in this community. So it's a really great panel of folks, uh, will be a great, um, should be a really good event where we've got, uh, folks that are, that want to encourage investment in this community, as well as folks that, um, want to protect and preserve our neighborhoods and the things that make Tallahassee and Leon County special. And it's, um, getting those two groups together to, to talk these things through, I think would be really helpful. So that's it.
Uh, Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I've got a couple of quick items, and then I was the unnamed commissioner who was going to bring up the transmission lines. Um, and I know we are just after 5 o'clock here. I just wanted to check in, this is the opportunity we have to ask some questions about the transmission lines, and I would like to take a little bit of time on that. But, Mr. Chair, if we want to do that after a public hearing, that's fine, otherwise I'll, uh, make a few comments and ask a few questions.
I'm sure Mr. County Attorney can answer those quickly and efficiently.
Okay.
Less than 10,000 words.
Well, I'll dispense with the, uh, short and sweet before we get there. Um, I'd like to request a proclamation recognizing Pride Fest 2019 to be delivered at, um, Pride Fest this Saturday, April 27th, at Clayman Plaza.
Motion's been made, seconded, and all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, sorry about that. Once again, uh, we are supporters of Equality Florida and, um, really appreciate, I know they appreciate our ongoing support. Secondly, we kicked off the meeting with Rabbi Jack Ronberg giving the last invocation, um, but I would like to request a proclamation for the rabbi to be presented at the May 28th commission meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded, and all in favor, aye? Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Um, my last quick thing is I do not want to let this meeting go without recognizing, even though it was several weeks ago, the incredible effort for over a year by our staff, the Tallahassee Symphony Orchestra, Village Square to put together Ode to Understanding. It was a phenomenal concert. Um, unfortunately I had to leave, uh, town before the conversation at the end, but, um, I heard one comment, there, there was a lot of, um, consternation over this concert, um, a lot of good, deep conversations that happened for over a year to bring it to fruition. We're the first community that engaged a community dialogue, um, with the sheriff on stage with a number of others to have that, um, to tee up that dialogue. We're the first ones that have taken that next step, um, in all of the places it's been performed nationally. And I think it did strike the right chord of balance, um, and really appreciate our staff's work on that and our support for that. With that, Mr. Chair, um, I know even without the six-page memo, not memo, brief that we just got from our county attorney, which I truly appreciate, Mr. County Attorney, so some of this may be answered within that memo. Um, I'm sure you all saw, I think there were four articles published this Sunday online the days before that dealing with the proposed transmission line from Next Era, Florida Power and Lightning Gulf, that for Leon County is, uh, proposed to run primarily, the primary impact zone, I would say, is Tram Road and out in, in the Wasstissa area leading out to Jefferson County. Um, within those articles, you did see the city's perspective on the benefit that they see from this project. For my part, I just, I, I did mention this at the March 12th meeting, um, that was one month after we were first notified about this project. Um, that notification came through residents who saw surveyors on their property and did not know that this project was coming. Um, we, um, my aide Gary Zirin started reaching out, realized that Talquin Electric had no idea about this project, even though there was some suggestion they wanted to co-locate, um, some of the lines with Talquin, and they're in dialogue now. Um, we reached out to our staff. We had not been contacted, Leon County DSEM's had not been contacted. And I believe at that time, the city had not been contacted either, although we got information from them, um, on February 23rd, and as you've probably saw in the paper, there was some dialogue and they've entered into a non-disclosure. This happened very fast, and I have to say that in our incredible efforts to answer questions and learn about this transmission project, it was of no surprise, I'm sure to any of us, that the state, and this is quite disappointing, um, but it is in line with other home rule issues, believes that one size fits all for a state of 20-plus million. And in fact, changed the rules so that transmission lines that are 230, 31 kilovolts, is that right?
Yes.
Or under, don't even have to go to the PSC. So there's no public engagement on any stage of this planning. They want to connect Gulf Power, Jackson County with, uh, Lake City area, and this is a territory where they have no customer base, Gulf or FPNL. So our state has put us in a position where we respond to environmental permits, and I think you can speak to that, Mr. County Attorney. Um, but we are not entitled to any information about the whole map. We did receive something from the city. We have not received much of anything from Next Era, FPNL, or Gulf. And, um, this is for a project that is talked about as resiliency, but we could see a 90-foot tall concrete, um, pole, 17 feet in the ground, 10 feet from someone's door in a rural area of town. So these are, this is an extreme impact. There is environmental concerns, there are other things, and I recognize that we as a board, because of the state rules, don't have much authority here. But I do, I would like to ask a few questions. The last statement before I get to that is that I, I understand that city utilities is a business, and they do have some benefit from the work that Next Era is offering to do on their lines. But they are also our partners. And residents in the unincorporated area benefit from and contribute to the city of Tallahassee. And I really struggled with making this comment today, but I am very disappointed that the city didn't work with our staff more and at least in, provide information that they were gathering from the company. We have really been left out of this puzzle. So if we're working together on renewable goal by 2050, these are utility issues, we're all in this together. And I really hope that in the future, the city will work with us more on these issues if we ever face another one. Um, with that, I would like to know, Mr. County Administrator, Mr. Attorney, if there is any way to formally request information from Next Era any way to formally request information from Next Era, or from anyone else, DEP, Army Corps of Engineers, the city, for why this route was selected. I have heard a lot of anecdotes, this is a two-lane rural road, the impact of these poles is extreme, and there has been lots of suggestions about other routes. So, is there a way that we could at least send a letter on behalf of the board, or something else? We may not get a response, but asking all of those different entities, including the state, why this route was selected?
Sure, there's no harm in asking.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'll add that to a couple of things, but if we can, I would love for, if others are in agreement, if the board is in agreement to endorse this approach.
Well, do you want to just ask the question, or do you want to object to this route as a board?
Thank you, Commissioner.
I mean, to, you know, to be more than just, get a "none of your business" reply.
I have been asked by the residents to encourage this board to do a resolution against the transmission line. I don't think, given the state rules, that that has a lot of weight, but it would be a statement from this board. In lieu of asking for that, at this stage, and again, this is our first meeting since March 12th, when we were still in information gathering, I think letters on our behalf to request more information, and there, I have a few, two other things that I wanted to focus on, but embedding in that letter our concerns about the area would be absolutely appropriate, I think, and if that gets to your question.
Well, yes, I mean, I think that, I think it should be a clearer and firmer expression of serious concern from the numerous citizens we've heard from, from, for a lot of very serious reasons. So, more than just, "Why did you do this?", I think we could articulate several very specific concerns, and say, "We would like to see this reviewed, we would like to see other routes offered, we stand ready to, you know, help facilitate that," and however way, I mean, I just think it should be very firm and very clear that we're not happy with this. And however it came about, whether the Public Service Commission has also been preempted at some level, which I think is probably what's happened during deregulation efforts in the legislature in the last decade. PSC should have been involved in this. This is absurd that they, it doesn't even meet the threshold of Public Service Commission oversight. There's no oversight, it sounds to me like. So, I think strongest possible language you can come up with to express our dismay, you know, citizens are extremely unhappy from the bullying, the lack of information, the heavy-handedness of this firm, this company. And, you know, it's, I think it's a very serious issue, and we should, you know, not just ask why, but, you know, express our opinions on it.
How about, how about we weave our dissatisfaction and our lack of information as part of the same thing? I mean, I think there's a limit on what, as Commissioner Dozier pointed out, there's a limit on what we're going to be able to do. We can basically say, "We weren't informed, we're having to pick up the pieces, we would have liked to have been part of the process, here's a list of things we'd like to know more about."
And the process has been very unsatisfactory for local officials who are supposed to have some sort of ability to...
This would be a thing to copy back on, because it's informational-wise, I mean, even if we can't stop it, if you'd known about this...
Yeah. If you'd known about this six months ago, and been able to at least preempt with some of the homeowners, that would have been a great start.
And it's affecting many counties, I mean, obviously.
Jefferson, Gaston, Leon, we don't have the customer base, for sure.
Right.
Yeah. You said you'd rather do the letter than the resolution. I'm just trying to figure out, the resolution to me would be stronger, but I know that you have a process that you're thinking through here, so I was trying to get through that process, first thing, and then the second thing, and maybe you can ask the question to the county attorney, is what is the strongest thing we can do? Is there anything we can do stronger than resolution letter to say, "Hey, we don't want this, can we sue?", or what can we do? So, I was wondering what, where you were going, because I knew you had more statements there.
Can we sue? Mr. County Attorney, can we sue?
Like every lawyer answers, it depends. What Commissioner Dozier just said is, we don't have a lot of information on the nature of the project, and that's really, things get triggered depending. For example, if it exceeds the 230 kilovolts threshold, then we're really pretty much out, as is the PSC. I mean, that, that threshold, if you would, indicates that we pretty much have no choice. They have eminent domain authority, they can go wherever they want, we can probably get them to come get environmental permits, but that's pretty much it, but they get to go where they get to go. And so, but if they go below that, and that's what the Democrat reported the other day, that their, their plan right now is 161 or something like that, we get a lot more ability, if you would, to become involved. So, the first thing is, what is the strength of the current that's going to be proposed to go through the wires? If it's less than the 230, there is a process where we could force a public hearing in front of an administrative law judge at DOA. So, there is a path, where we're not completely out of the picture. Now, we'll have to talk about what, you know, so what issues are we going to raise? I mean, is it, if it's purely aesthetics, that's one thing. If it is a damage to environmental issues, that's a whole nother issue. It sounded to me like, at least, again, I'm basing this on the article that was in the newspaper the other day, that the surveyors were coming darn close to the front of these people's house.
Yes.
That, that's, they want to stay out of the right-of-way because they don't want to have to deal with us in a greater sense. So, it appears as though the plan is to take either by force, I mean, legal force, or to dangle money in front of people to say, "Okay, we want to go through your front yard, therefore we get to avoid a lot of what Leon County and other governments could require of us." And so, getting the path, how that path was chosen, where are you in the process? They've not made any application to the county departments for anything, they've not sent a single letter, I don't, it's interesting to me that, again, today I saw in the newspaper that the city had entered into a confidentiality agreement, which by the way, hadn't even been voted on yet, is not till tomorrow. I don't know how confidential the confidentiality is. So, there's a lot of paths that we can do. I think that the concept of having a letter sent to the corporation, not suggesting, but demanding that they provide us with details on the project, is probably the correct first step rather than a resolution, because I'd be hard-pressed to draft the resolution when I don't know what the project is going to be, or where it's going to be. So, I, I was, Jensen and I were just talking about, we will craft a letter, I think it wouldn't hurt to come from the chairman and say, "Okay, you need to provide us with this information," and then we'll know where we are.
And are they skirting our permitting process? I mean, we haven't, David, we haven't heard anything from them, I mean, they're pretty far down the road. I mean, that's a violation of our ordinances, if people are...
They are not at the stage yet to apply for permits. They don't have to apply for permits, as of yet, but they can wait on that as long as possible, while they're surveying other people's properties, while residents are being asked to give up their entire property. There are lawyers who are working with some residents and others, so they are doing a tremendous amount before they get into that formal process with us, but if...
Let me, let me, let Commissioner Minor speak, and then I want to jump in.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, yeah, we've got into discussion, if I may, before the other questions come out, there's some really critical pieces of this.
Other questions besides what you...
Yes, absolutely, sir. And I want to make sure we have this in the appropriate posture. I really love how much you all want to get engaged, I appreciate the comments absolutely that we want to strengthen this letter. I just want to make sure we wrap our arms around all of this. So, at the direction of you all, I can share this two-page list of notes that we've gathered from all these different emails and issues with county administrator, the county attorney, in order to ask some of these other questions. And with that, I won't go through every single line of them, but we did have questions about if there was anything else we could do, like the administrative hearing. We stopped a pipeline from Leon County many years ago, that was different issues, that the flammable, you know, not having flammable materials, things like that. I don't know if there's anything else. So, this memo that you've just provided us is very helpful. Any other areas that we can look at, the eminent domain, home rule, anything like that, the voltage, that would be helpful. The environmental issues, endangered species, I keep coming up, but the karst features are really critical. We just talked about a sinkhole during our budget today, and I'm, I don't know what it looks like to have these poles in a karst area that is very close to the aquifer and everything else. I think there are safety concerns. These are very large poles on a two-lane dark rural road. Are we increasing safety issues by having these poles there? And this may not be a fight that we can necessarily win, meaning stopping the transmission line. I understand that, the rules are stacked against us right now, but mitigating the extreme impact and looking at alternative routes should be something that we absolutely lean in as hard as we can. So, last comment, Mr. Chair, and then we can get back to the discussion. Ms. County Attorney, I think sending a letter was my inclination, so appreciate your comments there, before a resolution, that we object to this process, we understand the rules, here are our concerns and questions to the company, but I would also like letters sent or copied, we can figure out how to do that, to DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers, they may have more information if permits have been applied to the state, to other entities that may be able to help provide us with some of this information, and I'll leave that for discussion.
Mr. Attorney, is that something we can request from those incidents?
Yes.
Okay. Second, the motion of a letter that asks for, here's your concerns and questions, as well as asking for more information. Does that capture what we're, what you're moving?
That we object to the way this has been handled, we would like to have an opportunity to review the information, have these questions answered, and particularly, why was this route selected and not others?
I promise I'm going to get to you, Commissioner Minor.
Well, I just wanted to say, we're not necessarily at this point saying we're trying to stop it. You mentioned the pipeline, this is not necessarily to stop it, but we want to find out whatever the alternatives are, what the process is, and so forth. I mean, well, I don't know if we are or not, I mean, we want to know more about where it's going, and...
Public utility companies, in my understanding, have to prove a public need. They have to, I mean, this is, they're talking about this in resiliency and other things like that, they get, in this country, and you can speak to this, but they get a lot of room to maneuver if they're proving that. They want to move incredibly quickly with this project, two years, and that's, that's a lot of work. It likely will happen, I understand that. I don't know if it needs to happen in the same location, I don't know if it needs to happen without other mitigation. So, if it could be stopped, that's fine, but if that public needs exists, yes, to your point, we may not want to stop it, but we want to be engaged with the process.
I think Herb used, in this, again, I may have missed it when I had to step out, Herb actually used demand, we can demand information, is that what she said?
I think we ought to, and, and see, if they say no, then they say no, and we can kind of go from there. Just one other comment on that, we had, if you remember, a natural gas pipeline come along I-10 and cut through Leon County a few years ago. I don't know what the current corporate attitude is of FPNL. I know when I was a lawyer in South Florida, we took them on with some frequency because they were not great neighbors, shall we say? But this natural gas pipeline, if you recall, we asked them to do things environmentally, which they agreed to do. We told them that they needed to mitigate some of their environmental issues, and they bought us, I can't remember, yeah, Eight Mile Pond. I mean, so, that's the kind of cooperative arrangement they had. We're going to have to see what kind of a corporate attitude we get as a result of that. My guess is, it's not looking good. If they already are trying to say that this has some sort of public records exemption confidentiality, then they're not sharing a lot of information.
Mr. Chair, I know Commissioner Minor is trying to jump in here, forgive me, one last thing on this piece. Mr. County Attorney, you, do you support sending letters to other entities as well, the state and others in addition to the company?
Yes.
Okay. And with that, the bottom line here is, there is no one representing the constituents of Leon County right now, or Jefferson County, in this fight, who has any authority. Let me pause there. There's no one representing it, who has their interests in mind, who is looking at these different alternatives, from my perspective, and from looking at these issues for the last couple of months. They may think they're benefiting North Florida and others, but we are the body that works for these folks day in, day out. And I really am grateful for the conversations that happened today, and for the support. And this was later than I'd hoped to kind of get some of these questions going, but I think it's the right time, so thank you.
I agree. Commissioner Minor, you're the kid that is really patient and is...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Dozier, I agree with the letter, I agree with the outline of the letter that you've drawn up just now. I would, I would probably go one step further, and so I want to know if you would accept a friendly amendment. You, basically, the letter, first off, states our displeasure with the process up to this point, the lack of sharing of information, and then asking for information. I would actually have another part of this, which asks for, which asks them to consider working with us, and homeowners, with, to provide some leeway on where, right? And I know the answer may be no, but I want them to tell us no. The woman who has a pole projected to be 10 feet away from her front door, well, will they, I would like to ask them to work with us so that that pole is not 10 foot, 10 feet from her door, but rather at her property line, 200 feet away. I mean, that's a terrible example because it's specific, but, but those types of things, I want to actually ask them, work with us, and the homeowners, and this community, to have something that we can all live with. And the answer may be no, but I want them to tell us no. I want to ask that question, have them tell us.
Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, just to address that point, and thank you, Commissioner Minor, the very problem with Tram Road is that these poles cannot be placed outside of the right-of-way and avoid people's front doors, in many cases. These are folks that built on a rural road, some of them built on dirt roads that are now paved. They're right up to the property line. And, Ms. County Attorney, I forgot this point earlier, but we learned recently, based on some questions from Tracy Benzley at Talquin, that even if the pole is in private property, in easement, or something they've gotten through eminent domain, the lines will extend eight feet out over the right-of-way. And that, even though it's in the air and not on the ground, it triggers some of our rules having to do with right-of-way. So, they will have to deal with permitting issues in some way, depending on the voltage. But there is no way to avoid putting poles in front of people's doors with this route. It is remarkable. And if you think about that, a very large concrete pole right in front of your house, not one of us would want it. Not anyone who works for Gulf FPNL or Next Era would want that to happen. So, the mitigation first is a different route. Second, it's safety, environmental, other types of benefits that they might be able to provide to help this situation, but if that transmission line is on Tram Road, we will not avoid people's homes.
Thank you. I think we are up to Commissioner Delo's, did we receive your...
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you're welcome.
Yeah, we need to vote to approve.
Okay, we want to vote on the motion for the letter that demands both future plans, as well as current feedback, and what else?
Expressing our concerns about the project.
And voice the concerns that you've mentioned, as well as others of us have mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you all.
Got a second for that motion? All right, second and by Commissioner Matt. Second, Ed by Commissioner Maddox. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your patience, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Deloze?
Thank you. Chief Abrams, congratulations on commission of, on accreditation of ambulance services for another three years, which is well done. The top industry accreditation recognized...
Second, Ed by someone near the middle of the table, and Dais, all right? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion passes.
For the general public, we are in the public input stage of the Northeast Gateway. I think there was a little bit, or we got out in front of ourselves a little bit, and there's a lot of assumptions. We're working with a lot of homeowners to try and make sure they understand the process and what this is going to be. But at this point, we're just collecting information and trying to get where we're going to hear the developments moving forward, but this is a point in time which we're really just trying to get feedback from the citizens. Yeah. When we have a series of meetings, it's all public meetings and stuff like that. I got approached a couple of months ago about renaming the Northeast Library after Commissioner Host, who had been a commissioner in a, before me, well, before me.
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
Well, let me, let me... (inaudible) I just have a thing. When I met with the staff, I said, "Well, how do we do this?", and they said, "Well, there are really variable guidelines." And I said, "Wait a minute, this is really going to open up a Pandora's box." What I might be able to do is ask them to come back with an agenda, to say, "Can you frame in so we have..." I think what's happened, at least in my opinion, is over the last 15 or 20 years, we've basically taken a policy set and just kind of scraped it down. And it's, I'm, you know, some of the things I'd like to think we do is things that'll have some lasting impact, certainly can change this stuff and anything, but I think having some guidelines so that future commissioners can look at this and say, "That's acceptable, that's not, that's appropriate, that's not." Would make hollowing lives a lot easier. So, I would just say, for the naming part, let's go to that, if we can have an agenda to come back specifically to talk to the policy, and then bring that back up.
Yes, motion for the agenda item to be brought back.
Yep. Just have, create a, I don't think, not a policy.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
And then, lastly... (inaudible) South last week, Wednesday, Thursday. And who had Mark Musson and the volunteers and staff that worked with it, it was...
Commissioner Maddox, on point.
Two seconds, just Commissioner Dozier brought it up, but I, I think you saw the pictures of, of, oh, the understanding. One thing I just, I wanted to make very clear was the diversity in that room, and the people who went to a TSO performance, they had never been to a TSO performance. I appreciate the board, you know, spending the dollars to make that happen. I think the community got a lot out of it. And I hope, moving forward, we can, we can continue to do, for created, equal things on the grander stand, and bring in nationally-known names and, and performances to, to spark our conversation when it comes to racial issues here in our county. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. I'm sure that Mr. Proctor and Commissioner Minor have a couple of issues they're back on the board here.
I've got five seconds.
Okay.
I've been assured that this is for public knowledge. I want to congratulate Commissioner Dozier on her engagement.
Ah, I'm going to stand up on that. Woo! Look at you.
(applause).
Miss quiet herself, huh? Mr. Chair, let the record show, I've said, "I'm, I'm not in the wedding, ain't going to be no wedding." Well, you can dance at the wedding. I want tux, I want to be in the wedding.
Congratulations, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Proctor, anything else?
Chairman, the quest, a request for some fish, I want to be very specific, brim, and trout for the north part of Lake Jackson, from the Florida Wildlife, Freshwater Fish Commission. And would the chairman please write that August body requesting for some fish?
I certainly will, and for $25, allowing me to blindfold you, I'll take you where you can catch fish anytime on Lake Jackson.
You promise?
Yeah. Yes, we've got that. Mr. Administrator.
They, we, we have previously, based on a request, and they have informed us when, during the year, they do that, when they stock.
Good deal. All right. I, I do have two proclamations.
Mr. Chairman, did you know how much he talked, you know, this was the most, some things were rubbing off by Dozier?
I'm sliding in gradually.
I see, man, this is a...
I, I want to request a proclamation for National Rural Electric Youth, sponsored by Talquin Electric, where they send four youth members to Washington, DC, and we want to recognize them at the May 28th.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Lastly, proclamation for the week of May 19 through 25th, as a Public Works Week. And we'll, we'll present that at our May 14th meeting. I, I, I do have a, one bit of personal pride, I am not engaged. Can we vote on the proclamation for public works recognition? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you for reminding me. See, Commissioner Maddox, I told you I learned from the best. I have just had our, not I, I have attended to the birth of my second granddaughter, and her name is Addison James Rutherford. I tried to convince them that Addison Jimbo was a good choice, but they went with the shorter version.
She watching?
I don't know if she's watching. It's past her bedtime, and she's a week old. But if she is watching, she's pretty well-educated now. That's all I have. If there's no other business, we're adjourned, and we'll come back at 6:00 for our public meeting.